Good evening. This special meeting of the SISD Board of Trustees will come to order, please. The date is Thursday, April 24, 2025. The time is 6:01 PM and we have a confirmed quorum. Thank you for joining us for this meeting, both in person and online via our YouTube stream. The full recording of the meeting will be available on YouTube and archived through the board website, where viewers have the option of watching the meeting with closed captions translated in multiple languages. We'll continue with our agenda. Please join us in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We continue with public comment while we do have one speaker signed up. They have signed up to a specific agenda item. So when we get to that agenda item, I will go ahead and call that speaker up. Our next item then is Board Honors. Mr. Escobar, please.
Good evening, President Nakana, members of the board and Superintendent Mr. Vazquez. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the district, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you will please step down to receive our honorees. First, we honor three students who won the Reed 180 National Award. This award celebrates students who have overcome learning challenges and excelled in their development through Reed 180 programs. The winning students are assessed based on their academic performance, growth mindset, personal development, use of student applications, and alignment with the values of the Reed 180 awards. The SISD students are among only 62 winners across the nation who earned this prestigious recognition. Congratulations to these outstanding students. From Fuentes Middle School, Ari Chavez. Her teacher is Melissa Peña. From Socorro Middle School, Zoe Mota. Teacher is Dina Delgado. And from Hernando Middle School, Jesús Roberto. Teacher Brenda Rios. If we can have you back to the front for a photo, please? And just a quick note that the photos taken by our district photographer, Mr. Largo, will be posted on the district website. The smiley face icon that you see on the screen will be at the bottom of the webpage. The photos will be available there for free high-resolution download. Congratulations once again. Next, we recognize the first-place winners of the 8th Annual District-wide Math Bee. These students demonstrated their exceptional math skills while competing in a four-part competition within their grade levels. They then advanced to a timed elimination round. Students from kindergarten through 5th grade who advanced from their campus math bee took part in the district-wide event. Congratulations to these outstanding mathematicians. From the Escondriastim Academy, Ares Delgado. Teacher Abigail Minor. From Osay-Kelleher Whole Child Academy, Michael Ray Crawford. From Loma Verde Elementary, Carlos Muñoz. Teacher Teresa Andre. From Campesre Elementary, Mateo Aguilar. Teacher Olivia Uribe. From Carrasco Elementary, Tiago Carranza. Teacher Liza Martinez. And from Visasol Environmental Science Academy, Richard Radel. And teacher Pedro Gurula. If we can have our students and teachers back to the front for a photo. All right, keep smiling, keep smiling. Congratulations once again. Our next recognition is for two SISD students whose artwork was selected for display during the 2025 Texas Art Education Association Youth Art Month at the Bullock Texas History Museum in Austin. This exhibit features artwork from pre-K through 12th grade students across the state. The two SISD students had their artwork showcased in March among over 100 award-winning artworks. Congratulations to these talented artists. From the Escondriastim Academy, Alanis Hernandez. Teacher Margarita Romo. And representing his student who was unable to be here, from Montwood High School, Joseph Mitchell. Congratulations again. Next, we honor the recipients of the National 2025 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. This award is the longest-running and most prestigious creative recognition program for teens in the U.S. It celebrates creative students in the 7th through 12th grades across 28 categories of art and writing. Congratulations to these outstanding students. From Montwood Middle School, Natalie Escalante. Isabella Silva. Their teacher, Ever Acosta. From America's High School, Abigail Cervantes. Teacher Samuel Muñoz. From Bill Seibert School, Lilian Miranda. And teacher Alejandro Carillo. If we can have you back to the front for a photo, please? Congratulations once again. Next, we recognize a high school boys varsity soccer team for making history by advancing to the UIL Texas Class 5A Division 1 semifinal for the first time. This team had an outstanding season, winning a 5A by district, area, regional semifinal, and regional final championship match. They finished the season with an overall record of 15-7-1. Several players received individual honors, including the 25A All-District MVP, Defensive MVP, and selections for first and second-team All-District teams. Their coach, Jair Olivares, was named 25A Coach of the Year. Congratulations to these outstanding athletes from America's high school. Noah Alvarado. Alex Joan Burke. Yorel Eduardo Castillo Pizarro. Ian Adolfo Chavez Garcia. Victor Andres Gomez Gallegos. Giovanni Hernandez. Ivan Jimenez. Alexis Damian Martinez Padilla. Gael Arturo Melgar. Aaron Moran. Robert Carlos Muñoz. Oscar Nebaris. Braylio Neng. Dante Ortega. Diego Perez. Gael Perez. Ivan Alberto Romero. Andrés Salazar. Angel Alfredo Sanchez. Josué Sotelo. Pablo Zarate. Coaches Daniel Murillo. Carlos Rosales. And head coach 25A Coach of the Year, Jair Olivares. All right, if we can have you all back to the front for a photo. All right, certificates up. Everybody looking at Mr. Largo right here in the center? And smile. All right, keep smiling, keep smiling. Congratulations once again. For our final recognition this evening, we honor a high school wind ensemble, trombone quartet, and saxophone quartet that were selected to perform at the 32nd Music for All National Festival, which was held in March in Indianapolis. The festival showcased some of the finest scholastic music ensembles in the nation in a non-competitive environment. During the event, students participated in educational workshops, including roundtable discussions on careers in the musical industry. They performed in world-class venues and received performance evaluations along with a post-concert clinic. Congratulations to these outstanding musicians from Eastlake High School. After we introduce all of the members of the band here being recognized today, the board will join them in the stairwell outside for a group photo. We'll begin with the band directors, Jesús Pérez. And Pablo Estrada. Now we'll continue with our student musicians. Marie Alanis Tejeda. Miguel Andrade. Matthew Parasa. Bradley Burnett. Alex Chavaria. Ernesto Cobos. Aiden Cobos. Michaela Contreras. Luis Cordero Reyes. Adriá Dominguez. Evan Esparsa. David Guerrero. Grayson Gutierrez. David Herrera. Christian Longoria Tovar. John López. Ismael López. Matías Macías. Diego Medina. Annabelle Navarro. Justin Wen. Marilyn Núñez. Derek Olivares. Kaylee Olivares. Olivas, excuse me. Ian Ortega Huerta. Xavier Peraza. José Piñón. Mara Ramos. Rocco Rivera. Jesse Rodríguez. Isaac Roman. Kaitlin Sanders. Zizak Soto. Natalie Soril. Emily Soril. Mia Torres. Ian Trejo Dávalos. Richard Vargas. Genevieve Velasco. Carlos Villegas. Anali Villegas. And that concludes all of our students being recognized. Congratulations again to all of them. At this time, we'll take a quick break. The board will join.
So as Mr. Escobar explained, we are going to exit to go take a picture with the students out by the stairs. During that same time, they are going to reset this auditorium. So if everyone will please exit the auditorium to allow them to reset for the next portion of the meeting, please, we'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. We'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, although we didn't officially break, we did step away in order to allow us to take a group picture with a large group of students who is being honored, as well as allow us to reset the room. So after resetting the room, we're back. And just for the record, the time is 6:36. It's still April 24, 2025. We still have a quorum. We'll continue with our agenda. It is a board workshop, a presentation of the fiscal year 2025-2026 preliminary budget. We do have one speaker signed up specific to this item. Each person who signed up was provided a copy of the open forum basic rules and advised when they signed up that policy BED applies to the process. Please respect the process during your presentation. As a reminder, you're allowed three minutes. And we'll go ahead and proceed. Our speaker for tonight is Mr. Hector Gonzalez.
Good evening. Before I start, I'd like to clarify one thing with the three minutes, because the regulation says that if only one or less is five minutes on the regulation.
Mr. Gonzalez, if you sign up for multiple items.
No, I only signed for one.
Understood. So that's what I'm trying to explain. If you read the policy, the policy says if you sign up for multiple items, you are allowed a maximum of five minutes.
Right.
But.
And I'm under five, but over three.
Uh, so.
That was the issue.
Yeah. In fairness, we always allow three minutes and to be inconsistent to that would be unfair to every other speaker who is.
There's nobody else, but.
On any other previous notes as well.
So. Good evening, Mr. Najera, Mr. Vázquez, and esteemed board members. According to a local headline, Socorro ISD plans to lay off 300 employees. For years, we have seen a breakdown in management and oversight. Here are the facts. In the past fiscal year, excuse me, Mr. Vázquez reports that the district faces a $33 million deficit in the next fiscal year. In the previous, you guys passed a $479.6 million with a $22 million budget deficit. Additionally, the district took out a $25 million loan to make payroll. And among other short-sighted decisions, the district gave us $2.2 million in oversight tax appropriations. We're giving the district 28 million more will solve the problem. Blame for their long-standing breakdown in management and oversight, which has resulted in a budget shortfall and educational challenges can be directed in multiple ways. The responsibility lies with the superintendents and with the board in their oversight. Additionally, the unions have contributed to the problem by advocating for and obtaining a salary increase and benefits that our budget could not support. Let's not overlook the teachers and staff who have failed to elect union leadership that considers both the union and the district interest, or the parents that have failed to advocate for high-quality education. Furthermore, we cannot ignore the role of taxpayers who have allowed only 2% or less of our community to elect board leadership by choosing to remain uninvolved. This engagement has resulted in a sidelining of our district preference, particularly those of our students and taxpayers. The real tragedy of this mishandling is that ultimately, those that got harmed the worst were the students. Are there alternative solutions to addressing the deficit rather than resorting to draconian measures of laying off 300 employees or the unwise proposal of 28 million in new taxes due to poor fiscal mismanagement? Consider first implementing a 5% to 10% budget cut across all departments. Stop the end of fiscal year spending speed that many school principals and departments engage at the end of the fiscal year to use a leftover budget.
Mr. Gonzalez, I'm sorry, your time is up, sir.
Excuse me?
Your time is up, sir. Okay, we continue with the workshop then. Again, presentation of fiscal year 2025-2026 preliminary budget. Mr. Solis.
Good evening, Board President Nahada, Board members, Superintendent Mr. Vázquez, David Salvi, Chief Financial Officer for the district. This evening, we're going to do something a little different, a budget activity game. The goal is to work together and see what it takes to balance a '25-'26 budget. This activity will help us look at different ways we might close the budget gap, see how changes in funding or spending could affect our schools, and make better decisions with a full picture of the options and impacts. So what can be changed? You'll be able to change two types of things, money coming in or revenue, and money going out or expenditures. Revenue changes might include student enrollment changes, student attendance changes. If voters approve a tax increase or evader, if new laws like House Bill 2 pass. Expenses, expense changes might include adjusting employee pay scales, reducing the number of workdays for some employees, decreasing the health, the district's health insurance contribution, staffing reductions, and cutting budgets for schools and departments. Each choice affects our budgets, so we'll, we'll, we'll want to think carefully. So how does, how does this game work? Your group will start with a budget that's not balanced. To fix that, you'll look at the deficit, choose which revenue and spending options to change, keep track of what you change and why, share your final budget, your balanced budget plan with the group. So here are a few tips. Every decision has pros and cons. Think about how each choice affects students and staff, and work together and share ideals. There's no one right answer. At the end, let's talk about what we learned. After the activity, we'll come back together, talk about each group's plan, hear why different choices were made, and look at common themes that can help us going forward. So at this time, I will work through some of our current assumptions. Then we will break out into two tables so that you can work together on the budget activity. So one of our current assumptions is an enrollment decline of 772 students, or about a $7 million decrease in, in revenue. We are anticipating an attendance of 94.5%, but as you can see, you can work through any changes, whether it's an increase or a decrease. Additionally, I have provided you all with the opportunity to evaluate what each penny would produce in terms of a, of a tax increase, and also the impact of the passage of HB2, whether it's a pass or fail. On the expenditure side, you'll be able to evaluate the impact to various changes, whether it's a 1% decrease or a 2% decrease for each pay scale. Additionally, you'll be able to evaluate what a one-day decrease or up to a five-day decrease would mean for employees on a 217 through 239-day calendar. You may want to consider what a lump-sum payment would, how it would impact our budget. Additionally, reducing the district health contribution by either $5, $30, or as much as $50 would mean on an annual basis. Currently, through, through our staffing reductions and also through resignations, we've identified about 250 positions that we currently have been able to close. You'll be able to evaluate also what five, 10, or 15 positions would mean at the DSC if we were to have staffing or position reductions. Now HB2 potential required compensation increase. If you are able to evaluate if HB2 passes, it does require that 40% of that increase go to compensation. So if we were to elect pass, you'll see it'll generate an additional $24 million, but you'll also see there'll be an additional $9.6 million compensation that will have to be made. Here, so far, we've reduced campus budgets by 5% and also department budgets by about 7.5%. But you'll be able to evaluate what a 10% or 15% reduction would equate to for the campuses. Additionally, what the 10% reduction in department budget would equate to. We, there's no changes to state programs because we are required to spend that amount. Under the district allocated budgets, we have included another half a million. This is related to the staffing reductions and the anticipated cost for the unemployment claims. And this, and so far, we've been able to identify positions currently funded in this year's budget that will not be filled. So these are vacancies that we will not carry into the new year of about $9 million. And we've also allocated for about a $7 million transfer to the health fund. Our student, as mentioned in previous meeting, one of our challenges is the replacement of student devices. We do anticipate that if we were to replace devices, it would be about 45,000 devices at a cost of about $800. We would spread that over five years, so the impact of that would be about 7.2 million a year. So before we break to the tables, the current deficit that you all be working with is 8.4 million to try to close. Okay? As a reminder, the microphones at each table are on and they are live, so any conversations will be, they'll, they'll be able to be heard not only in here but also online. Do we have any questions regarding the activity?
On the HB2, the, uh, the basic allotment, is it the $6,555 that you're calculating or the one that was prior, which was like 6,280 or something?
No, it's at the 6,555. So an increase of about, it's 395, but the estimate is at 400 just.
And then you also mentioned if we click yes on that, then it gives us the natural amount that's due for any teacher. Is that at 45%?
40%. So it increased from 30% to 40%.
And you mentioned HB2. What else are we going to look at? Possibly the vouchers that are.
And you mentioned HB Two, we're also gonna look at possibly the vouchers that are being passed, one billion dollars vouchers. How's that gonna affect us? I mean, we don't know yet, but we're gonna consider that.
So the way you can consider vouchers is maybe the impact to enrollment change. So you may want to consider if you're thinking vouchers will affect us, maybe it'll affect us up to eight-hundred students. So that's how you can determine maybe the impact of vouchers. But this is why you're able to kind of change these numbers to see what is the impact to the bottom line so that different decisions could be made. Additionally, if you feel that ninety-four-point-five percent is maybe a little too aggressive, you're welcome to reduce it by point, by half a percentage, so you can see what that impact is.
If I can step in real quick, that ninety-four-point-five is our current attendance rate, so that's why we, we chose that one.
And then I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Kim before we break out.
Good evening, Board members. I really appreciate the invitation here tonight to facilitate this activity with all of you. Mr. Nahada, we just once again, I think last year we did this activity with all the board members as well, so you're very familiar with it. At the same time, I do want to make sure that this is conveyed to the public who may be seeing this for the first time live, that this truly is a scenario base, meaning that what you discuss here tonight is not necessarily set in stone. In fact, the budgeting of a school district is a process. In fact, you won't get to a decision until June to actually adopt the budget. Until then, there could be a lot of variables that could change. You have more information regarding the House Bill Two, or what the Senate does, and so forth and so on. So there'll be a lot of changes potentially that will go about. What this gives you is twofold. It gives you one, a deeper understanding about how the budget works for any board members, or for that matter, any members of the public, or perhaps even school administrators here in the Secor and Penn School District. This was developed by my former CFO and myself in our previous school district, and we created this to really educate the public about how the budget works. It's so sometimes complicated in many ways. So you are seeing some macro views of the situation. I would encourage you at your tables tonight, just like you did last year, to really engage in a deep discussion about the multiple different scenarios. One of the things I would always try to go and nudge board members to think about the worst-case scenario. The public really needs to know that you are discussing that. Whatever you decide here tonight, whether it's decreasing clinical pay or counselor pay scale and so forth, while the viewing public may see that as a, oh, my gosh, are they really gonna do that? It really is just a hypothetical situation to see how the budget works. So once again, I want to reiterate to all the folks who are watching this here tonight that this is a scenario tonight, that there's no decision or action that will be made as a result of this, but rather a consideration for further discussion and consideration recommendation that you have to make to the board. And in fact, the reason we're here as conservators is go and guide you through a process, that you have a process in place as a board to go through what the budget is. And I think that's a very important tool to do that. With that in mind, I do want to give Mr. Solis and his team great, great credit. They've been working with me all week, and my former CFO as well too, to make sure that the numbers are ready to go and all the math behind the template is working properly as well too. Once again, I would encourage you to just push yourself to have a good generative discussion. And while the public may engage you with you outside of this board meeting, you at least understand that you went through multiple different scenarios to be able to answer any questions. So it's not an unknown, but rather, hey, this is what we're seeing as an estimate in that regard. The point, as Mr. Solis pointed out, is try to balance the budget. That is the goal. At the end of the time that I will facilitate, there will be a winner. And we'll see who gets close. And we are gonna go around the table to actually see your reflections in terms of what you've learned, what more questions you have, what are some potential direction that you want to give to the, to the staff? So that will be said at the very end. I do think because we have two tables, when we get to that time limit, it'd be good for the board members to sort of do a gallery walk of each other's template to see where things are at before we do a reflection. I think that might be important. I've asked Mr. Solis to facilitate one table, Mr. Guterres to facilitate other table. Mr. Vasquez and I will just go around the room to make sure that our influences are only about just answering any kind of facilitation questions. So really, this is your activity. This is the board's activity, not the staff's activity. So please understand that as well too. Any questions about the particular activities so far here tonight? All right.
All right, so what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go ahead and have Mr. Solis stay here with Ms. Macias and Ms. Erdia and the gentleman, if you'll proceed to this table next door, and we'll have Mr. Vivieras facilitate that.
Yes, man, we got this.
Yes.
Okay, so we have, according to that clock, five till. So I think we're gonna give you guys a good thirty minutes. And I'll come around and check on your time to see how that goes. As soon as you get to your table, go ahead and start working on the template and start working it through and certainly get going. All right.
I can help make whatever changes you need, so that way just facilitate the discussion. I don't have to worry about it. I follow you guys as best as I can.
Thank you. A quick question, the lump sum?
No, so the lump sum payment is what we used to have in the past, I think the five-hundred dollars.
Like an incentive?
Correct, we used to have it, I believe, like around December that we would see it. It would be there five-hundred or something.
Kind of like a retention bonus, I think that's what we discussed.
Right, so I think once Esther came about, that's when we started hearing about retention, because that's the language that we had to use. But then prior to that, I think it was like a lump that districts would do. Right before, I believe it was right before April. And so I'm just putting that back in.
So that's what we have right now.
So that wasn't something that we did this past year? When was the last time we did that?
Probably two years ago when.
Okay.
Mr. Naim, please correct me, the idea behind having the lump sum is that way it's not a continuous increase in salary, but where you would say on, you know, employees at least that year?
What we were doing is last time.
The idea behind it?
Correct. Where you wouldn't have a fixed sum.
And then we did the contest. Did any schools, I think some schools.
So if we did.
Received a trophy because they had the best attendance? What was the, I mean, the average, I was using ninety-four, but what was the highest that a school was able to achieve, do you know?
Attendance percentage.
I'll give you feedback on that if you, language, it does.
I'm not sure the individual, the highest percentage, I will tell you that we ended last year at ninety-four-point-two percent attendance rate. We're currently at ninety-four-point-five, and I can tell you the way we did it.
Okay.
Multiple schools have exceeded their, their targets from last year.
I'm just, yeah, or teach me.
I couldn't give you a number right now, but it's been a lot.
Let me, I would say our enrollment is gonna decrease even more.
I, I, yeah, I think so.
I'd say let's put it at nine-hundred right now, just to, and then make attendance ninety-five. If we could get a point five.
In that case, it would, it goes in and then.
I can tell you, just to get those three points, there was three-tenths of.
So the employees like.
It's been a lot of work and.
Even though it doesn't hurt the district.
Not quite sure we'll be able to get to, there was pre-COVID attendance.
That might change, that might change, yeah.
Bin hole instead.
No, that was a good question.
Yeah.
Okay, so then the, so we start with the enrollment change.
Seven-point-seven.
Or we said seven-hundred-and-seventy-two?
Let's go to.
And Paul brought something up.
Oh, we're still working on revenue.
The vouchers.
HB Two passes, you know, potentially, it might increase. So do we go worst-case scenario?
Before making a change there, I'd just like to play, play is not the right word. I'd like to explore the impact of expenditure decreases before adding the potential of a later.
HB Two, is any part of that going to benefit public schools?
Um.
Okay. How much and where?
I would say pass, because I think.
And I, I'll leave it to the experts.
There's a determination.
Basically, basic allotment going up.
And I don't think.
Five-hundred, okay.
Which helps, okay.
So that's an increase, that's an increase of three-hundred-and-ninety-five. Although the increase is minimal. Four-hundred, and from our experience, for every hundred, it's about six. I suspect that at least, that will pass, hopefully it's not that little. But hopefully it'll pass.
If it does pass, forty percent of it has to go to, which is good for employees.
But it's one, they only give us the money.
So they would, that increase would, it's still in, so it's continuous. The challenge is, there's if.
Compensation increase for campus.
Then we carry on those salaries.
I know that the way the, the house version was a three-hundred-and-ninety-five dollar increase. The center version was, there was no increase to the basic levels, they're still far apart.
It could be more challenging, we'd have to consider into.
One was, passed for one billion, but they're asking five billion in the senate, believe it. And they could, you know, one billion, so I think, I think the.
So you can see here that, and with. If HB Two was to pass. Then you can. Okay, so where are we at there? It would, then, then actually be at a five-point-nine. Oh. I think what we have to also consider is.
But that's an if, we know what happened last legislative session.
Hey, so let's see.
Seven-hundred.
Let's keep attendance.
Don't go.
Then we anticipate another seven million drop in revenue. The question is, would this surplus be enough? And how much?
I heard is truly, if it does pass, we should be looking at that additional.
A reduction in current enrollment, correct?
Our budget deficit, other than anything else.
Okay.
So that way, we keep that in mind to help the district instead of, woo-hoo, we got this money.
Yeah, but you know, two years ago, we really. We didn't do much to go pick up our enrollment.
And we have to.
And we stopped, and I think that.
I think if anything else, this has been a lesson, to always live within our remains and make.
Because we know where the kids are going.
Select our budget based on.
Or pass it because they worked on it.
More reasonable.
Whether they go to charge school.
Responsible.
I don't know how much that can affect El Paso.
With HB Two.
Ten thousand, in my, maybe not that much, but I don't think, I don't think enrollment. I think we know how to go after those kids. I think we did a good job, if we go back to, if we did Walk for Success. I think we could pick up and stand in front of Walmart.
Could we use some, the lump sum?
Students, I think we could pick up.
You know, goes into the.
It'll be that much, but that's, it's good to be.
But that way, it's not forever.
No, that's a good idea.
Because we are looking at a deficit. I haven't found that answer, but I know that.
Good idea.
I haven't.
And I hope they don't put any limiting words. But if you guys could do your magic to add the flexibility.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's a great point, because does it, is the forty percent directed towards salaries? Or could it be thirty percent on salaries and ten percent on bonuses and so forth?
I know right now, the way it reads, compensation includes salaries and benefits, but historically, it's that the intent of the law is to provide salary increases. But again, not the intent of the law, but sometimes the intent of the legislature is to go salary increases, but we can definitely ask.
And we have a little bit of leverage.
Right. What are the DSC staffing reductions?
Some of the verbiage that finalizes, I think, would help give us the flexibility, or districts Texas-wide, to be able to still honor our employees, but not tie us to where we're hurting.
In the future. And when you say health, did you say health benefits too?
Because it's compensation, so they consider benefits and salaries, but that's what they consider compensation.
It's a one-time deal.
Mm-hmm.
So we could use some of that for the benefits to offset, and then the other is for salary increase.
So we really gotta see how the language plays out. If they, if they maintain the current language, at least start asking those questions.
I mean, I'm glad that it's going to our teachers, that's, that's, who deserves it more than anyone. I just want to make sure that, that we're doing this in a way that is fiscally responsible so that we can maintain this and, and make responsible decisions in the budget for our district long-term. It's not just a one, a one-time.
So I think maybe we could start with just, no increase in terms of the Vator or the HB Two, and then see what you can make, so you can evaluate the different things. I know at the last meeting, as you had mentioned, what does a one percent look like? And so that's why we've built those in. So if you want to evaluate that, we can, so you can see, if we were to make changes without any passage of HB legislation or Vator, and we could see what that is, and then we could go back and say, okay, what does the Vator look like? What does that look like? And then we can do a combination.
And if I can just chime in real quick, just both of you all made great points too about, you know, the spending, like if we, if it does pass and so forth. Yeah, it's not a time to jump in for joy, because the other part of this is not balancing, balancing the budget. It's also building your fund balance. So that's, that's the other focus as well.
So this would be in addition to, Mr. Nahada, what we've already reduced by. So for example, in HR, we're down twenty-three percent of workforce. So the departments across the board are like that, it's not that we've actually had to recommend it, it's just through natural attrition. It's happened where we have not replaced positions, so this would be in addition to.
I was gonna see if you can answer a quick question for us.
And I understand that, except with minus two-fifty up there.
Regarding.
So that minus two-fifty, in addition to what has already been dropped.
Right, just, just so that you guys know, that's, that's what that.
No, I think it's salaries, in fact, out of that forty percent, the way it's written right now, it could change.
It's using an average.
Seventy percent has to go to the teacher positions, counselors and librarians, I believe, the full-time FTEs.
So it'd be seventy-five percent.
No, it's out of the forty, seventy percent goes to that.
Towards that group. The other portion of that dollar can go to administrators and other, other staff members.
But it's all salary.
By law, it has to go to that dollar now first, anything else left over of that. Now, could the district get a little bit higher than that? Because remember, your, your, your revenue is twenty-four million dollars, forty percent of that is what?
Going over here.
Out of that nine-point-six million dollars, seventy percent of that has to go towards teachers, librarians and counselors.
See how that would work out, I know we talked about that.
It has to go.
And then I mentioned before, it would generate fifteen, fifteen million dollar savings.
It has to go to, I think, the mechanism by which that's gonna be worked out later.
So we're, we're going to, that is something that we're gonna look at, but I know that was something Canutio was considering, and initially they showed them cost savings, but when they got the history of their claims, it actually was more expensive for the district and the employees. So it's gonna be one of those things we're gonna have to research and see if it's worth it in the end for us.
This goes to salary?
But yes, that is something we're gonna look at.
The money goes to them, but it's not tied.
It's interesting you bring this up, because the House Bill Two has already passed, so there's no more influence on the House bill.
Experience or a similar disinclination.
The Senate has always wanted to give one-time lump sum payment. The House is the one that actually wants to increase the basic allotment to give this mechanism additional dollars for salary increases. So the House could see it in a way that says, no, we don't agree to the basic allotment increase. It remains to be seen, because the Senate always wanted to.
So the only thing with that is there's gonna be an offset, right?
About twelve thousand or whatever it was.
Making salaries out of salaries and.
So they were not looking at a repeated reoccurring cost structure.
There is usage at the clinic, and so there is a reduction on the insurance.
Legislature into a financial reoccurring cost down the road.
We don't know what the impact will be for claims. But all things, I guess, are on the table, but just so that you have the whole picture.
You know, different commerce.
But, um, okay, so for me, in my opinion, and I'm not sure about Mr. Gata, for me, this is a good guardian point. I mean, maybe even go back up just a little.
This is gonna be a challenge, I mean, I think that.
Department budgets.
The way I think it's been looked upon is that if there's decreasing enrollment, then you have to decrease sort of your operational call, just like any business would.
It gets us about five million, remembering that yes, it's an excess, but what we're trying to do.
Operating with, with, let's say, five-year numbers. You know, numbers in enrollment five years ago. So the question becomes, how do you go about?
A budget where we do have an excess.
You know, reducing your operational costs, and it's getting to be tough.
And just because it says five million here is.
So this is why you're going through this exercise of seeing what are the possibilities.
Assuming that everything else is exactly in line. So if we were to decrease the pay scales by one percent. You know, this would be maybe like. That'd be a scenario number one. And then maybe consider the Vator. Eight million, and see comes down to five-point-two. Then, can we do a lump sum?
So a question, for example, with what we have now, it's one-point-eight.
Reduce the number of positions that have to.
Savings, which is teacher scale.
Not replace, etc.
Can we decrease it by one percent and then whenever HB Two passes, then it has that forty percent increase.
If you go to Vator, you put in a couple of pennies, what are we talking about, the change?
It, it's more affordable. Does that still meet both letters of the law?
So that, if you almost.
Six million for each penny.
If you decrease about one, right? I think the, the state increase amounts to be about a three percent increase.
About a three.
So in reality, when you decrease by one, you're only giving the teachers two percent raise.
What was the thousand dollars for the lump sum?
Yes, you're cutting by, as you're giving that a little bit, so you could do it that way, if you were to in some sense, there's nothing against that.
I don't wanna go, yeah, I would just do it right now.
Again, that's a board discussion.
Hey, we're gonna raise your one, one pay, we're gonna put a thousand dollars in one hole.
This is where I think you and your fellow board member here had that discussion about how that goes.
I wouldn't.
And you're gonna have multiple opportunities coming up to discuss that. The last thing I wanna do is tell you, you should do this or that, right? I mean, that's, this is your district.
No, I'm just asking if it's.
Yeah.
If it, is that part of the rules? Can we, that in that way?
We could make ultimately more money out of this, it's gonna be enrollment.
There's still a two percent increase.
That's a question we all, we don't know.
Right, and long term, we're.
Just a channel, uh, that's what I'm hitting Hosen right now. Uh, Mokluf, anyway, um, he always talks about three things, right? There's always a practical answer, the legal answer, and we just answer those two things from a practical side. Can you do it? Yes. From a legal sense, I think you can. The political answer, there's a whole other ballgame there, and that's something you gotta think about, how that works.
That's our community. We do the collecta.
Sure.
Let's tight, but yet ultimately, everybody gets a two percent and we keep everybody. So anyway, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out the.
And I don't know the answer yet, but as soon as we know more, we'll be able to provide that information. The other thing you can consider is what would a decrease for the two seventeen to two thirty nine calendars reduce? So just so you can see, a one day decrease would be about two hundred and ninety dollars. So we were to move the, on my contract from two twenty six to two twenty five. That's what we would be talking about here. If we were to reduce it by as many as five days, it would be one point.
So you have a almost five, five million dollars.
Can we do all the work that we have to get done with five, five less days?
And what did you guys do here?
I think the challenge could be maybe on the two thirty nine. I mean, employees go start the studio.
And that's what we're putting on administration, you know, is that feasible or are we going to hurt ourselves by?
Yeah.
I, I can tell you that, well, just from a practical standpoint, the two thirty nine employees are typically your custodians, uh.
Generous.
And that's what gets us ready for the.
So yeah, so that, it, it, is it possible? Yes, it'll, it'll be rushed to clean up, and then I just worry about. Go down there, David. But, but it's, it's possible.
And the reason we, we should show this is in case maybe the one percent wasn't considered, but what would it case look like? So we just wanted to give you different options. Um, I can leave that there. Um, now the health.
I, just, just very quickly, um, with regards to the one percent decrease, we, so in layman's terms, we're talking about considering reducing everybody's pay by one percent.
This scenario.
I was just looking at teachers because we know that if.
Be going for the TRE.
Um, HB two passes, then muscle manuals.
TRE deadline to vote for in August.
Raise them by three.
The next cycle.
So if we do this minus one, plus three, then they would still give a percent increase.
Not saying where.
Versus the required.
I'm not either.
Yeah, I'm just, I, it makes me very nervous, very uncomfortable.
Uh, for me, this is understanding.
In the big scheme of things, I just.
Right.
You know, and like.
I think before we reduce their cut in pay, I think we gotta look at everything else. Just dissect it.
And for me, what makes me uncomfortable is that they're gonna give them an additional three. And then are we gonna then cut another three hundred teachers next year?
Okay, I understand.
Put a thousand reduction in number.
I wasn't quite sure, understanding the, the thinking that I understand.
Ninety four point zero percent on the attendance.
In my.
They go down at the bottom.
Overall, it would still give a much two percent increase.
So you still have some surplus, but not significant, right?
And it helps.
And then go up again, and let's just say, no passage at all on the HB two.
Come on.
Now go all the way down.
My other question is healthcare. What's that gonna look like for next year?
So.
Sure, you can see that if we were to pose a five dollar decrease to the district's health contribution, then it'd be about three hundred thousand.
And I think, you know, in some sense, I would just, the only thing I would advise right here through this process is to figure out, what do you, what do you think you have control over right now?
Look like reducing.
You know, I mean, think about it from that vantage point, and why not go through the scenario now while you can?
Okay. And bring it down to five fifty, what would that look like? So what happens if we brought it down to thirty?
If. Now you're looking at one point eight. That HB two or no additional funding comes from the state.
Our current health plan?
Then we have no option.
Structurally, but this would be a.
But to aggressively pursue.
Showing.
Uh, at that point, you could also have to be the three cents.
What would five position be? You were to.
You're gonna surplus five point eight.
Go ahead and.
When, when you're talking about DSC staffing position reductions, um, I mean, we have a multitude of, of salary scales here. What is that entail? Is that just like an average?
That is an average. We are right now just, cause there's differently, he said different, so on average, we're looking at fifty five thousand. So like, it could be a high end position, but it also could be a lower end position, so we're just.
Yeah.
Okay.
It could be, the savings could be a little bit more, but it could also be a little bit less. It just depends on the.
Okay.
Is.
And Ms. Stiles is joining us, if you have questions for.
Okay.
Is that? Our target should be to try and.
We're gonna say HB two passes.
Fund balance.
Are we leaving it at this?
By thirty five million.
I'm, I'm game to.
Over the next several years, or do we need to pursue that aggressively in this coming year?
You can also look at that.
You know.
So for the first three, like I mentioned, about six million.
Three answers to this. There's a practical answer, the legal answer, the political answer.
With the.
Then that's a political answer. You gotta kind of identify for yourself in terms of. How much leeway do you wanna give the district to make sure that we have a plan in place? Could you go and go get it after all at once?
Use it for technology purchases?
What would we use that? You're gonna have to.
So I don't wanna put this here and say, hey, just.
Hope the TRE and the HB two occurs. And I do, I do agree with you. I think the.
Increase the tax rate without something being.
So then you create that and you don't spend it.
It's, it goes to EMO.
To create that, uh, cash flow situation, so that the district does not have to keep on borrowing.
It'd be one time, but we would continue, uh, carrying those additional pennies.
What would your, you know, as elected board members?
So like, this has a comparison, our district, we're able to add five pennies back.
Where the hot spots would be, where the right point would be in that situation. And then that's a discussion.
Cause they took advantage of it earlier on.
You can safely discuss it now. Harder to discuss that in June.
So if we're looking at a two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, right? For the current homestead exemption is a hundred thousand.
Mm hmm.
So for every penny, the impact would be about fifteen dollars.
Increase our fund balance by thirty five million.
We were looking at it for.
In order to.
Twelve penny. You're looking at fifteen dollars a month. That's on average. Of course, there's some homes value more than two fifty, some less, but that.
And I think that's, that's important, um, you know, critical, important for everybody to know.
The situation where we have to go.
Once it would give us, and what is the impact on it?
Yeah, right. Now, if you go down, one of the things that we just could not.
Alrighty, let's win this.
Uh, is your healthcare.
Let's, let's go back to the one percent down, now that I understand it.
Position, right there, transfer to health fund. We're gonna have to really do some work on that. So that health.
I like your question.
Healthcare that you have here in Socorro is not self-funding, essentially.
I think.
So as a result of that, that seven million is coming out of your general operating budget into it to bolster it, to make it whole. So if you address that, then potentially you have twelve million dollars to the good.
One percent, my recommendation.
Then if you did that, then your, your timeline of creating a, some type of a fund balance position is two years potentially, rather than three or four. Now, you also take into account in twenty six, twenty seven, you're gonna have some enrollment decline. And if you were to have a, you can, you can see from this template what are the enrollment decline is every year in terms of cost. So you gotta calculate that in as an additional revenue somewhere down the road. So if I'm trying to build something for the next three years, you gotta also think about the enrollment decline.
You know, my little.
So you're saying a one percent.
Down the future, or maybe not.
The, the one percent just for.
Mr. Gata, I know you think, you know, you're saying that enrollment, you think that it could actually stabilize or go up potentially.
At the end of the day, minus one plus three would still a plus two.
We, we made a talk about demography report. It was done last, what, two years ago?
Sorry.
So this is something that, you know, with you very thoughtful about.
Today, um, Steve, Uncle came and gave.
We're gonna lose in ten years. How many students over in ten years? The guest report.
Talked about this topic.
It's like seven seventy five per year, seven fifty per year.
There may be a bit of a.
They said after about ten years, uh, we expect to be down to about forty thousand students.
Still trying to research what that looks like, but, um.
And that, that report, when I read it, was largely due to birth rate issue.
Finances, that kind of thing to see.
So this is a chance where you can kinda hypothetically play that out.
And we asked that, you know, is it legal?
And, uh, and see how, how it affects your overall that you need to take care of. If nothing else, this gives you start thinking about how you should direct the staff about how the budget might go, and what type of discussions you wanna have with the board.
I think the difficult part is going to be that we continue to lose staff.
Cause if it doesn't, then of course that's off the table.
We will.
Okay.
Have to continue to abide by EEB. I mean, if we don't have students.
Absolutely.
And.
I know last time we were.
Need as many positions, that's just the reality. Yeah, and then they think that's one of the things that we're looking at in the future, like every year, hopefully just through natural attrition. And maybe, we did have some.
I'm gonna give you guys ten more minutes.
Incentive that we offered, so maybe something that we continue to offer the incentive of foreseeable future to hopefully avoid any sort of, uh, reduction enforced.
So that's what we've identified so far. There's, it includes vacancies, attrition, and some of the positions that we're looking at reducing.
Charter schools.
However, at this point, we're down to about fifty eight only. We're still placing.
The impact of the charters had stabilized.
But the number doesn't change, cause we're still closing a position.
Study, we didn't have.
Where they're filling a vacancy, so that's kind of what we've identified.
You know, legislative variables in play.
I do too.
Cause I don't.
But it was more a result of just declining birth rates, period.
Attrition, then.
That was the, the large attrition.
And then, well, the other thing that scares me is the potential for them to do away with, um, pre-K funding.
Yeah.
Is he staffing position reduced? What's the?
You know, I think there's a natural transition.
So right now, anything you add there would be above what we've already lost. I don't have the exact number, but I can use.
Or proximate to.
We're down twenty three percent.
You know, their home, then they will continue.
Yeah, yeah.
At our campus, but.
So this would be on top of.
Okay.
So then. Availability, I, I think that'll carry an impact too.
For post-campus budget changes.
So.
Campus, we don't touch, right? Are you in agreement?
I think we should.
Yeah.
And I like to say, dude, but what do we?
In my eyes, the release that we could do.
Look, we look at the health clinic, that's one thing.
Let's leave it at that.
Close down this, this, this.
Departments, I love them.
Early college, maybe we're just, just talking about it, but look at the health clinic, which was down, been into local agreement with other.
Do you agree?
With other entities.
What are we at now?
And just to see.
Because just building on what Paul said, cause I also wanna understand, you know, the, the, I don't.
Yes, you're no positive.
Highest, um, the premium plan that we had, we were going to, um, make sure that no one else would enroll in that, so.
Yeah.
Like, I'd like to understand the impact of that as well. You know, does that seven million incorporate that already? And if it does, well then, what was the impact of doing that?
HB two. HB two.
Like, if we were just, let's just say, if we were just.
I think that's a great topic to bring back up here in the next, uh, you know, cause you're gonna need to know that information.
It goes the opposite way.
To adopt this budget going forward.
So let's just look at it maybe a different way.
If you recall, we had that discussion, because you guys have a January enrollment start on the healthcare. We made that decision in November, September.
I mean, just so you can see.
For the October enrollment process.
If we do three cents.
I think we need to increase, you know, have a little, a, a, a longer runway room on that situation. So I think that information should be brought here sooner. To Mr. Gata's point about having a discussion about that.
And I can tell you, we have run those numbers, uh, we, we hadn't put it up yet.
You can see, maybe, is it two cents?
For the aquatic center, for example, that, that would be about a nine hundred thousand dollar savings. But the problem we run into there is that we don't have, uh, we haven't seen. Our, our swim teams, for example, they wouldn't have any other place to go because all of those, uh, the other facilities are already booked for next year.
So.
So that's our worry there.
While you're reducing about the dollar amount that you see there, which is, I think, about a nine hundred thousand dollars. You may be spending three hundred thousand dollars of that reduction towards transportation cost somewhere else.
Yeah, and the face to use the other.
Maybe seven hundred thousand or six hundred thousand dollars, let's just say.
And, and same with the, uh, the clinic, we're, we're, we've been looking at, at that little bit, and I think that would bring about a one point six million dollar savings, however. We're not sure what kind of impact yet that, that would have on our insurance costs. So that's, that's a, that's a consideration as well.
But this would be actually looking at more of a one to one, a long term.
Better direction to the staff about.
So it could be less than that, if we consider the planet technology.
Because you wanted to see.
It could be slightly less, we kinda factored that in a little bit.
Cause you saw that increase in a percentage of attendance generates some addition revenue.
So to Mr. Vasquez's point, yes.
Attendance incentive program.
Five, but the question is still.
What's maintaining the ninety four point five?
Yes, yes.
Versus a ninety three percent, ninety two percent.
Like a.
So it's brought an attention for that effort. So I think once again, you could now, you could now direct staff to have, you need to address these areas when you figure that out. But you, you wouldn't know that unless you actually sort of play around with these numbers to see what it does. And what's your ultimate goal?
What is the purpose? I mean, not the purpose, what is the process of getting a Vator approved?
Had to come together as to what is our goal? You mentioned a few minutes ago, is our goal the increasing our fund balance position?
The board approving.
Is our goal, uh, some other things?
Cause we need to have it in place, uh.
There's gotta be some discussion about what is our primary goal that we wanna accomplish for fiscal policy.
So you need to approve it by January.
And it's almost twofold, about balancing the budget, but also increasing the fund balance.
But we'll be bringing that efficiency as selection of that audit.
Quite honestly, yeah.
By June.
And every district.
We already have it out.
The fiscal policy, uh, let's take care of teachers.
In early, I think, by August, I wanna say mid-August, ask for the.
Five minutes.
The board has to sigh.
To, to the attendance, um, incentive.
Sometime in September, the results of the efficiency audit will be presented, and then we'll publish it in October.
I'm, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can get more creative, for example.
Okay.
Okay, five minutes.
And I don't mean to say more creative.
We were to.
I don't know what the, here's what I'm thinking.
If we were.
It's because if I'm a student and we have this contest every nine weeks, right?
They didn't.
If I'm absent in week one, and I've got no incentive anymore.
Other than the financial aspects of it.
Because I'm out.
If the voters defeated.
Nothing to incentivize me to attend in week two or week three.
That whole night was a shot.
Exactly. We would be passing both.
But one of these we looked at is just improved attendance.
But then we would also be passing to tax rate.
So, that way, you still have a shot, you're still in the game, even though you were sick and had to miss a day or two. But you still got a shot, and if you, if you've improved your attendance from one six weeks to the next six weeks.
When you go from Vader.
That's something we can look at as well, that way everybody feels like they still have a shot.
Cause you have to adopt the budget in June.
Or, yeah, and I don't know what the.
Actual election call day, the cost would be, but.
And I'm very, very aware that everything carries a cost now, because you have to adopt two budgets.
You can't adopt two budgets in August.
I don't know, um, a monthly random drawing, you know, or just where, where you get your, or every day that you're.
Yeah.
There, you get.
The Vader?
Every week, that you have perfect attendance, you drop your name in the bucket, you know.
And they do, so in addition to the, uh, in addition to the district attendance, since it is, each campus has like their own version to, to include things like that.
So you gotta think about.
So they can build to win the district competition if that makes sense. So, so, yes.
Okay.
They've gotten really creative.
So you gotta consider that.
All right.
And you have to make the case as to why.
Just in, talking to the other districts too, yeah.
What it's gonna be.
They continue to struggle.
Why you, the question is, why are you gonna do that?
Showing an improvement which we're jumping for joy about, but it's still a far cry from where we used to be, uh, COVID, so, but it's, but it's.
Yeah.
We're happy to see these games, but we think we can get a little bit more, we need to.
We're trying to, or, in my brain, live within.
Okay, two more minutes, and we're gonna switch tables, okay? Two more minutes.
Gonna switch tables.
We'll see who's, who's close, or who's done a better job here.
I don't think so, let's go back over to attendance.
Well, they haven't seen each other's.
No, let's see our numbers.
I think that's a good thing, because we do better than thousands, then we're okay.
Okay, here's what we're gonna do, board members, what I would like to do is have Mr. Solis and David Gutierrez stay, so they can explain what happened on the, uh, the template. But the board members switch sides, so you can study each other's sort of template, and then we're gonna reflect a little bit. And I'm gonna close it up by having Mr. Solis say some few words as well too. Okay, but right now, let's go ahead and switch over, and when you get there, uh, Mr. Gutierrez, why don't you kind of go over what, uh, this team has done? And their rationale, and, uh, Mr. Solis, why don't you kind of explain the rationale over here?
Mr. David.
Mr. Gutierrez, would you kindly give Ms. Garde and Ms. Macias the right answer, please?
Come on with David. You know what, I think I might have to change this back. This is your worst-case scenario, right?
Don't believe that they're too late, too late, no change.
This was Andrew Kim.
No backseats, they lost.
I'm gonna have to.
First, they evaluated what, the one percent.
No, no, no.
Without, actually evaluating the scenarios based upon no passage of House Bill and House Bill's Peter.
Yeah, yeah.
Ultimately, what they've decided is.
Say no.
If we, if we said.
But David, on that one, it wasn't a thousand, I think it was nine hundred.
Gravification election, given that.
No, it was a thousand.
It was a thousand?
Yes.
It was nine hundred that they had.
No.
No, no.
It was a thousand.
We looked at a thousand.
It was a thousand.
Cheating, no, you can't change it.
Okay.
The thousand.
No, it was a thousand.
Yeah, thousand. All right.
So we have, uh, the passage of House Bill two.
Ninety-four point five, David.
But they also elected to decrease the pay of teachers by one percent. Cause the rationale was, the rationale was like, well, there's gonna be a natural increase of about three percent, so that would be two.
Their enrollment change. They expected more than the seven hundred seventy-two.
Um, also.
Seven hundred seventy-two.
To decrease the district's health contribution by thirty dollars, which would be about one point, you know, this is.
Percentage stays the same.
Be shifted over to the employee.
Really didn't look at the Vader.
Um, they still left two hundred and fifty on the staff.
Showed up.
The reduction.
Um.
And then, of course, we have the required nine point six.
Changes here to expenditures, they choose a five-dollar reduction for health insurance.
To remove the five percent reduction.
Staffing positions stayed the same.
They increased the department reduction to ten percent from seven point five.
Ten positions at the.
Cutthroat.
And lastly, they elected to.
For HB two.
Include the replacement student devices.
They did change the.
And so you can see it comes down to two point five.
Five percent reduction.
So with that no, this originally would have been nine point seven.
There was no student device replacement, so. I believe this was closer to five million when they were.
Something was possible, so.
They did have ninety-five percent.
I think they did, let me change it.
They did, you're right.
They were aggressive on that.
Or.
They were unrealistic, is that what you're saying?
I'm so aggressive.
What was your percentage for the teacher?
Mr. Kim said.
Half, half a percent is very tough to maintain, very.
You, you mentioned unrealistic.
The challenge that we're also discussing is.
The strange thing, post, pre, pre-COVID, we were at about ninety-five point five, ninety-six, and so forth and so on, so.
The support does an amazing job with attendance.
Balance or live within our means, but the bigger question, how, how do we start adding? Cause one percent is about five million.
Two point five.
So the question is, like. Should we look at a Vader's?
Well, you also gave, you put yes on the student, student device replacement.
Yep, we were very mindful on campus students.
That's about seven point two million dollars.
Maybe through a lump sum payment, or maybe through, maybe it is the device, there are things that they were discussing.
Okay, any, but, um, but you see where they were kind of coming from and their thoughts?
A little different.
Okay, why don't we get all the board members at this table, because we began here, so why don't we all come together with this one? And it looks like we have a clear winner, I don't want to sound like, you know, we get, we give out, uh, trophies to everybody, but there was a winner. Uh, surplus was created about five point eight million dollars over here, let's just say Team, uh, A. Uh, Team B had a, uh, a very moderate, but still a surplus nonetheless at two point five million dollars. So regardless of the both budgets here, I think, uh, both teams look to create a, um, a discussion around a surplus position there, which I think is a, in some sense, a very good, uh, thought. One of the, the attributes of this particular activity is to try to bring board members to a consensus. It does not mean that everybody agrees, it certainly doesn't agree on the path towards it. But I think it's important for the boards to understand, what is our fiscal goal? That we want to accomplish, and we saw two different ways of getting there, right? And I think it's important for y'all to have a generative discussion about that together, and try to go ahead and negotiate what is our direction going forward. Cause ultimately, the board as a team has to come together to give direction to the staff. As a fiscal policy, you have an academic policy about where you want to go. This is about a fiscal policy direction that you want to give, and this is how you build consensus in that regard. So you guys got a good understanding about it, so I'm gonna give you about good ten minutes for you to go ahead and have a good generative discussion about that. And Mr. Board President, I'll just turn to, just let the staff just, and just kind of like listen to y'all's discussion about it.
Anybody have any comments? I think I have some initial thoughts, but I don't want to jump right in without.
Enrollment, you came out with enrollment to seven seventy-two. How did you guys, what, what do y'all think about the enrollment? Cause right now, they're predicting seven hundred, I mean, it's being.
Possible vouchers that we would. Being realistic, that we would possibly take a hit, but. Countability ratings. That was my thing.
I agree.
The other one I have, can you scroll down? Further down. The health, they said, uh, thirty dollars. They want thirty dollars.
It was in the middle, not, not the five, not the, what was it, fifty-five? I mean, we've, we've always been, um, conservative. And, and I think we, we need to make some more tough decisions, and I think that's gonna be one of them. Um, I would like for Madi Ben to explain to you about the, um, the one percent right here, um, because it was eye-opening to me, because initially I said absolutely not. Um, no decrease in compensation for anyone, um, until she explained to me what that would look like and how it's the fiscally responsible thing to do and why it is. It, I just see it as no, we're not gonna do anything that's gonna hurt our teachers, because that's, that's not the point here. But I, I'd like for you to explain it.
Thought process was, number one, if HB two passes, we have to, for teachers, it's forty percent and seventy percent. So whatever forty percent and seventy percent has to go to our teaching ranks. And what I learned is that's about a three percent increase. If that is added to the payroll, that means as we continue to decrease, that's gonna be difficult for us to live within our means, because that's, we know that, that one-time infusion is forever. However, if we, in the teacher realm, decrease by one percent, increase by three, it would be a net two percent. And we could technically live within our means and through attrition, continue to do what we do without having to lose any of our teachers. We could do that through attrition, and that would still meet, um, the legislative side what's written, but it would meet Socorro, I S D's, um, need for the long haul. We're playing the long game, we're not playing a short game. That was the idea, and that's why it was just in that teacher pay scale, because ultimately, they would see, um, a two percent increase of this. It's minus one plus three.
To prevent any further need to, to get rid of jobs, to maintain financial security and, and make sure that the decisions that we're making are responsible long-term. Not, no more Band-Aids, we, we, we gotta stitch this up long-term and make sure that our, our district heals.
If I can just inject myself, this is just a facilitation here, what I'm hearing right here is a, a fiscal goal they are identifying. You don't want to lose any more jobs.
Right.
So that could be one goal, the question becomes, consensually, does every other board members want to do that? I mean, obviously, yes, but the question is relatively speaking, what is a primary goal? Once, and I think that's a discussion that you need to have now, so that when the budget does come along here and gets more firm with these numbers, you can make that decision knowing what you decided as a goal. And that gives the staff better direction.
Right.
Initially, we, what was the total that we increased this first time around? It was, how much is the employee contributing for the health insurance?
So, and I want to just varies on which plan they, they elect, but for the district side, we reduced it by, I believe, five dollars this year, so we're at five, five hundred and fifty-five dollars a month. So that's why we added the five dollars there, um, so if we were to look at a five-dollar change, that would be about three hundred thousand a year for the district.
I, i- if I may recall, yeah, we, we had been actually at five seventy-five, uh, per month per employee, but we reduced it to five fifty-five.
Yeah, you'll see, that's what I recall, five seventy-five to five fifty-five.
It was a twenty-dollar difference.
I'm sorry, twenty-dollar difference.
There we go, and therefore, kind of the idea of the theory that we discussed that, when we looked at our health insurance, we were gonna do it through multiple years, and every year we were going to increase. So, that was just kind of in the middle, just the idea to have the discussion that we are going to continue to try to become self-funded in the insurance a little bit at a time. And we just, again, with the, the possibility of funding coming in, we, we just wanted to look of what, what that looked like. So if we do five or thirty, it, we're, we're still going, again, in my mind, I'm, I'm looking at, how are we gonna continue to help decrease? It might not have to be that, that big of a, an increase, but to where, um, those listening understand that it, in my brain, we do have to start doing something to balance out and be self-funded.
Mr. President, if I can inject, uh, once again, both of these plans, if I'm recalling correctly, does not take into a TRE election. Am I right on that?
Correct.
That, that is a discussion that I certainly I think that y'all need to have right now for the staff to really understand that, because there's a timing issue. So you have to adopt two budgets if you're gonna go for a TRE election, that'll be in late June. But the actual call for the election, for the November election, is in August. But in, so in essence, you're kind of doing it early, and August, you can't wait until August almost. So, and we don't have that many shopping days left here to, to June, so that discussion needs to be had about the TRE issue.
I think, um. So, my initial observation was that, um, I guess, at both tables, we realize that, uh, simply stated, we have to live within our means. And, um, the, maybe the, the, the importance of contributing to the fund balance is still top of mind for all of us. We know that we can't, um, that it's not enough just to not draw from it, we have to improve it. Um, the, maybe the discussion of the challenge is by how much we have to improve it for it to have, um, the outcome that we're after. Which is to avoid, um, having to obtain those short-term loans to maintain our cash flow.
Yeah.
Um, that's also, I think, a community education effort as well. Uh, I do believe that we're gonna have to pursue a Vader. Um, even if it's just to improve the fund balance position, because, um, because we can't leave it where it is. It's, it's not practical, it's not fiscally responsible, it's, and again, um, one of the challenges that I have on almost a daily basis is, um, that there's the belief that it's exclusively poor decision-making that has gotten us, you know, into these challenges and into this challenging financial situation, but it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's no funding change or additional funding in the last five years. It's inflation rates, it's, um, you know, the reduction, um, in, in enrollment, it's, and it's not, it's not just students not coming to our campuses. It's as we've seen in the demographic study, it's a change, a reduction in birth rates. So as students graduate, we don't have the backfill of the pre-K and the kindergarten students anymore, and that's what we're seeing, the negative impact there. Um, or the negative net from that student change. Um, I like that it reminds us of what the variables are.
Yeah.
Of, and, and helps us understand.
Yeah.
What the impact is, you know, because we can very easily say, well, um, the, uh, computer refresh.
Yeah.
Is important to us.
Sure.
But without knowing what the associated cost is, well, okay.
Yeah.
You know, there's, money can only be spent once.
Right.
So, you know, as we align priorities.
Yeah.
Where does that priority fall?
Right.
You know, and if we have to make, you know, it's, sometimes it's the difference, okay, are you gonna cut your left hand off or your right hand off? Which one is it, because one of them gotta go?
Right.
So, and, and I think that's.
Yep.
You know, that's what we're seeing here, I, I remember last year, we discussed, um, the attendance factor.
Yep.
And the possibility of increasing it to ninety-six percent where.
Sure did.
We have been previously, we've been there.
Right.
Um, and thinking that, well, it's not impossible, and, and, and while maybe not impossible.
Yeah.
It's extremely challenging, it's extremely difficult.
Very.
Um, and so, you know, in spite of all the incentives, in spite of all the activity, in spite of.
Yeah.
All the education and re-education that we've done, you know, I think we increased, what was it, point three percent? And so, you know.
We still have a few more months left.
Absolutely.
Than average of the year.
Right, and so, I mean, to say that we're gonna go from ninety-four and a half to, to ninety-five, um.
And your staff is working really hard.
Oh, absolutely, I think, I think it would be a great goal.
Yeah.
But going in, we need to be eyes wide open, we can't, you know, I think, I've heard it way so many times, hope is not a strategy.
It's not.
So, what is real?
Right.
And while that doesn't mean we let up on the pursuit of it.
Yep.
You know, we need to base on, on real numbers, on what is the actual situation.
Mr. President, if I could, uh, just have the others, if you have a thought about the TRE, the Vader, because the motion of getting a Vader to the table, just the budget alone, two budgets, takes a lot, a lot of lift on Mr. Solis and the staff's part to get that going. So we need to start thinking about all the work that has to go through that. So I just want to hear some thinking around it, certainly I have an opinion about it, but I want to hear y'all's opinion here.
If, if we did, um, approve a Vader and it went to the.
Voters.
To our voters, um, I think it's gonna take a lot of legwork on our part, our, our district, to make sure that our, our community understands why and where we are. Um, because it's gonna be difficult, it's gonna be a difficult sell, absolutely. Now, my question is, if it, if it is approved, and the entire amount, or I'm not sure how this works, but can it all go to the general fund?
So it does, essentially, basically, it, uh, the Vader affects your M and O revenue source, so it does bring that in. Typically, some school districts, the way I did it in the past, I usually had the board taking a, a resolution as to how, what the purpose of that additional revenue would be for.
Okay.
And you could do it that way, in fact, one of the things I put on there was, it would not, uh, increase superintendent compensation. It was a political thing, but I put it in there. So I can get you there, so school districts have adopted those kind of similar resolutions to give the public, because the public is gonna ask, well, I'm not gonna give you a blank check.
Yeah.
So what is the purpose of this additional twenty-eight million dollars that you're gonna raise by twelve cents, right? So that's something to be clarified, this is why you're gonna have a discussion here, what is, if you're gonna think about it, you have to be very clear to the voters as to why, just like you would on the bond side. When you go out for a bond initiative, you say, we want to build a middle school, we want to build a high school, we want to buy buses, right? Which is allowable within the law, so you're very clear to them, so I think in some sense, you have that obligation just as well on the Vader side.
And if I may just, uh, just like we've done with the bonds before, we had the advisory committee, I think we'd want to have a committee as well for this, just to see if there's even an appetite for it, and if, and if there is, how should we and how will we spend that money? That way we're transparent with the voters, but I also say, it's important to note too, that, uh, if we go out for that Vader, the bulk of the money is coming from Austin. There's money sitting in Austin right now that we could bring here, and I think it's like, what, two-thirds, uh, one-third, or is it, uh, three-quarters to quarter?
Not quite sure what the breakout is, to be honest, uh, we would have to look further into that.
Yeah. It's not an easy clear cut, that's the case, because you're really raising your local.
Yeah.
Property rates, so the state doesn't increase their contribution relative to your local rate, so that, that's something we're gonna have to really think about on that issue. Uh, just to kind of hear the others, would that be okay, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Macias and Mr. Garrett's gonna give, give the microphone.
And please correct me if I say anything incorrect, because whenever Ms. Garde and I were discussing truly what my number one thing in both of ours was living within our means. So never, whenever we looked at the information and we were making the adjustments, we're saying, okay, what changes can we make?
Yeah.
And live within, you know, S I S D means and looking at the long game. It wasn't just for this year, next year, but how can we truly continue to do that to where it's through attrition that we're losing any type of positions? And that we're trying to build our fund balance as much as we can, but within our means. So that's why we didn't initially touch the Vader.
Right.
The second thing, whenever we were looking at this, we were saying, okay, we're gonna put our campuses first, our students first, our teachers first. So that's why we were looking at everything that impacted our campuses was very little impact. And again, administrators, we love you all, but the impact was there through attrition, what can we do there versus, and it was the same thing with the technology. It's about students, let's put that information, or that support, um, to that field. Going to the Vader, which was the third thing, is we said, okay, Vader, that means fund balance, and I think that's where your question came in. Cause we said, we're not going to put any of our eggs in that basket, because we do, it is gonna be a lift. Administration, we would like you to move forward with what that looks like, and we're gonna do the lift with you all. Administration, we would like you to move forward with what that looks like, and we're gonna do the lift with you all. But we don't want, or I know I don't want, to rely on that. I wanna make sure that we're living within our means. If it passes, amazing, fund balance. And then I love the idea of the committee, then we move forward with what we're gonna do with that.
Yeah.
And we're back to being the Socorro of what everybody knows.
Okay. Great comments, by the way.
Well, it's gonna be a hard sell. I think all the districts are gonna try to pass a Vader. With the county doing some some legislation going on, it's gonna be very difficult. We haven't had a basic allotment increase since, I believe, two thousand and eighteen.
That's correct.
And our funding obviously is low, but I like the idea of having a committee together. We're gonna have to explain it.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna have to explain it, but it's gonna be a very difficult sell to tell the taxpayers.
Difficult to explain it, by the way.
It is, because what's been happening to our district.
Yeah. And the what's gonna also complicate the matter is that in November, at the same time, let's say, a Vader might be on the ballot language. There will be potentially a constitutional amendment to increase the home set exemption to a hundred and forty thousand dollars, which actually will actually help out. So you gotta explain the two things together there, if that makes sense. And actually, the Senate's actually considering for sixty five and over, an additional fifty thousand dollars on top of that. So it's got a ten thousand dollar kicker in it for sixty five and over. It's a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar exemption. So if you own a home that's a two hundred thousand dollars, you only be taxed, your taxable value is only fifty thousand dollars. Which forces then you to potentially increase your rate on the I N S side to make that obligation. So that's something to really think about. So there's a lot of complicated thing to your point, Mr. Garrett, about this situation. Anything else you wanted to mention about the C R E? Because you're saying that it's gonna be tough. I don't disagree with you on that.
It's. I me personally, I would say no.
Yeah.
I have to think about it again, because I mean, it's a very difficult, because of the way your people are looking at the district right now.
Yeah.
They're believing us. And to go out and ask them for a Vader tax, if we're not gonna explain it well, we're gonna lose. We have nothing to lose. Now, a couple of years ago, back in twenty one or twenty, I think, we're gonna go for a Vader tax. We decided not to do it.
Yeah.
Should have done it probably back then, but as of right now, going for a tax, I think it'll be a very difficult sell.
My previous school district, I did a T R E uh, prior to the pandemic. It was a seven cents increase. It took us five months of discussion to get to that point, a seven cents increase. Um, we weren't crazy to go beyond that. Seven cents was a push, but we won that election by three hundred votes. Very tough. It was very, very tough uh politically. I just wanna go and give you, because I know there's been discussion about an entire twelve cents. You don't have to go all twelve. So depending on your goal, let's just say hypothetically speaking, you go, let's say, five pennies, right? So that still generates twenty million dollars. So what does that do to the bottom line? Look at the bottom line surplus is twenty two million dollars. So I guess what I'm saying is you don't necessarily have, there's nothing that says it's considered all twelve.
That's where our committee could help us. What is the appetite and and what could um our community truly support us with?
Yeah.
And I think there's a scenario too, because I think we have a little bit of wiggle room in our tax rate.
On the I N S side.
On the I N S side, so that way it would be flat, yeah.
So right now, you're at thirty nine cents in your I N S rate. You're actually obligated to go down to about thirty one, maybe even thirty with values rising, right? So if that's the case, you could, you have room to actually switch those, so the total tax rate doesn't change, if that makes sense.
That's where we would just have to communicate.
You gotta understand, your taxpayer do not see two rates. When they get that bill, they only see the total tax rate. People have a hard time understanding what M and O and the I N S is. They just see the total tax rate.
And the ballot language is gonna say that it's an increase.
Language will say it's a tax rate increase, no doubt. But so it is something to think about in terms of all this complicated issue. But once again, it still comes down to this board discussing, what is our fiscal policy goal that we wanna go ahead and agree on?
Not only the language, and and they change also percentage? Is 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 it still sixty seven percent or sixty four percent? Have we got a Vader tax? Did that approve? Did that pass?
So that hasn't yet passed. I think it the the language you're speaking about is, uh, I forgot which house bill it is. It's 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 now, they're requesting a sixty percent majority. Super majority is what they're calling it, super majority.
That that language has always been talked about. I I it's it's been talked about since I've been around. I've been around for a while. Okay.
And again, I always add my two cents.
Please.
With H B two, I have been sharing about A D Z. A D Z might give us one point five to two million dollars that we're leaving on the table. And with H B two, please correct me if I'm wrong, they might be going down to seventy five days. I believe we approved our calendar or one seventy five. I believe we approved our calendar at one seventy, so that would make us eligible. And that's all of our summer schools intercession. Uh, again, in my other life, we're bringing in about one point five.
Yeah.
Here in Socorro, based on how we do it, we would bring in about two, two point five, easy. Um, and it's just the documentation. You you already have it in the system, so you're leaving a little bit of money that you could naturally already do. And it's good, hopefully, if it passes, it's both elementary and middle school.
Right.
The other thing, uh, pre K initially was saying, you know, what can we do? It it might be funded. So that's another thing that, again, this is baseline. We're gonna be looking at hopefully getting full allotment for pre K versus the point five.
So I just wanna go and just kind of add one more item to this, just as just to see, once again, scenario, no, the student device. And now you're at twenty nine point nine million dollars with a six cent or five cents in the T R E election, seven seventy two. Now, there's there there are some other thoughts out there that the seven seventy two potentially could be a little bit more than, let's just say, you know, let's go with nine hundred. Then you're looking at losing about a million dollars there, so twenty eight point seven million dollars. Once again, the discussion you need to have is, where do where do we, how do we wanna get there? By which which way? Do we wanna um take care of the campus and and what are the non negotiable? Uh, Miss Masia's mentioned about campuses, right? You know, uh, the way I looked at it was I drew concentric circles and what was in the middle was a student. So I made sure nothing was cut related to the students, whether it was their participations and different things. But to some degree, cuts were made about adults. And so once once again, a discussion of the board in terms of how you wanna approach this discussion, just like you do with academics. You wanna have a consensus discussion the next few workshops here with David and Mr. Vasquez, so that they have a clear understanding. Where this board wants to go and how to solve this issue.
Well, can we, can I guess, can we have a workshop, say, okay, we're gonna do, go T R S, see what, see what we can get. We're gonna go another workshop. Maybe close on the clinic, another workshop, so we know, because we haven't done that yet. And I think that's what we have to do. We'd have several workshops, come with different ideas.
Well, and I do wanna say that this is the beginning of it, because these numbers have been vetted. That these numbers are as close as possible to the numbers that you will see on those workshops that are coming up. The clinic numbers reduction is nine hundred thousand dollars or so, I believe.
About what point?
One point two.
So with the clinic, we we are looking at at possible reduction. The the question would be, what would be the additional cost if employees were to go to other providers? So we need to to vet that out. So I don't wanna provide you with with the verbiage, say, this is what it would be uh to to shut down the clinic. Without giving you the information on what would be the additional cost associated with employees having to go to other providers. So I think it's it's only fair that I provide you with a full picture of what that would be. Same thing, the discussion would be, uh, I know there's been some discussion or mention about the aquatic center. Um, the question would be, what would the timing of that look like? Um, because what we have to remember is that uh the pool time that we would have to schedule for our athletes, for our student athletes. And then the costs associated with the transportation and also the renting of those facilities. Um, and then also the timing of it, when would be the the. The most advantageous time to to do that, because we do have to schedule uh that around um the availability of the neighboring pools. So it just might not be as easy as saying, hey, let's shut it down, because then what happens if right now there is no availability? What would we do? Um, other considerations could be maybe just keeping the indoor pool available or open and maybe not no longer having the outside pool. So there's different discussions that that we we need to provide to you, but in order to do that. Uh, we'll go ahead and make those evaluations so that we can provide you with, okay, this, these are the different options. Because I don't think it's just as simple as saying, let's just shut it down, because there are additional associated costs with each option.
Mr. President, unless there's some additional discussion that needs to occur, which I think would be great. I do wanna go ahead and let you start thinking about, in honor of the NFL draft here, my favorite NFL player, Enes Smith twenty two. So two things that you have some um uh thoughts about in terms of, hey, I got these two things. But the two additional questions that you're still like, I need to know more. But think about that as we finish up here. Did you wanted to have any other questions or thoughts, I mean, discussion around this topic?
Myself, um. I think the uh. Information on the Vader is necessary. I think if we're gonna pursue that committee, we need to do it immediately. Um. I do think it's gonna be a hu- a huge education effort, but I'm ready for it. It's um. And I know we we. Definitely understand um. The the objective of of living within our 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 means. But want to know, you know. Have all the information available. So that. Uh, we can continue. So that we have paths. We have.
Yep.
You know, i- is 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 costs continue to increase. Living within our means. Might mean having to increase um, you know, the local contribution, the revenue.
Yeah.
It's just.
And I can tell you that you are not the only one struggling with these conversation. When I went out with the T R E a few years back, there was about a hundred and sixty eight, if not a little bit more than that, that have already passed a T R E elections. So uh, I think Conatuyo has their T R, they've already done T R Es. El Paso I S D has done a T R E already as well too. So they have a few more pennies to go still, letting them maximize it. So you you're not the only ones. In fact, you're one of the ones who have never have not gone above. So that's something to think about, consider as well, in terms of information.
Yeah, cuz like memories are short and and that's not credit that we're given.
Right.
It's, you know, that's in the past.
Yeah.
All that matters is now. So, yeah, I are maybe being so fiscally conservative has come back to hurt us.
Yeah.
So.
And I know you mentioned this before, growth has helped you sort of mask some of these situations. This number, I'm gonna tell you right now, is one of the most important numbers to understand. And you brought this up at the table over there. Um, I did a demographic study every year. So I was so scared of those, that number. That number drives everything. And you can see the huge impact. So it's in 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 uh in certain parts of our uh Tex- Texas and Donoc, Dr. Hennessy will call it a market share. What's Socorro I S C's market share? So the denominator is the total number of students available. What's your market share of that? So every year, you're trying to account for those numbers, right? So uh, it's important to think about what that is, because right now, we're just kind of stabbing at it, right? And the number that we're using, the seven seventy two, is sort of a two year, it's a two year old demographic data point. So that's something to really think about.
Two and two, did you, is that something that you want us to share with you or?
Yeah, I think so, because I think I've asked Mr. Solis to take notes, because so that the the board can, uh, the staff can get ready for the next meetings to get things going. So if you wanna start that, I'll just turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
Sure. Remind me what the two and two are again?
Two things that that you really understood and two more additional questions that you have, that you need to uh, that the staff needs to do a better job of bringing forward with you.
Uh, let's see, two things that I really understood, um. I would say I was reminded. About. The impact. That a continuing enrollment decline uh is going to have. Um, I was reminded of and and elaborating on that as one item, I was reminded of the demographic study. The fact that our decrease is not coming because our con- our students continue to leave. Again, our students continue to leave the district that has stabilized. What that enrollment change is coming from is um in the changing birth rates. The second thing is that in spite of whatever potential. Uh, revenue increase we might get from the current legislature, uh, it's still not gonna be enough. We're still going to have to find places uh either to reduce or um. The only other place is to increase, because, you know, and that's that's assuming that there is some.
Yeah.
You know, increase.
Yeah.
Those are the two, uh, two things that. I still want to know. One of them is uh the impact of some of the changes that um we made last year, for example. The. Eliminating or closing uh any additional members to our premium plan.
Yeah.
Um, so what was that impact? And then um. Secondly, maybe, can we um go down a bit? I think I would want to be clear on when we look at, uh, a little higher, Mr. Solis, I'm sorry, on the uh. Staffing positions and reductions just across the board. I'd like to have a clear understanding of um. What eliminations or reductions we've been able to make so far, because. When we talk about, you know, a number like two fifty, and I'm just saying it because it's up there, right? What what's been in- included there? You know, how many reductions have we made from last budget year, you know, to this year? What has the net change been and where are they? Because I think it's important.
Yeah.
Because I think it's it's it it impacts morale, you know, because there's a lot of, the first thing I always hear is, you know, well, how many administrators did we cut? And and I know there's been administrators cut as well.
Right.
And I can even uh identify some of the positions.
Right.
But to me, that just tells me um, I am not doing a good job of communicating that, because it should be very clear to everybody.
Right.
That it is.
Yeah.
You know, that that the reductions, when they do come, that they are.
Yeah.
That there's impacts everywhere.
Yeah.
And it's not just, you know, one area that's being hit.
Great question.
If I can, I I know uh, they each need to go, but if I can just answer that real quick, I can tell you, since last summer. We have closed around six hundred positions district wide. I don't have the breakdown as of yet, but about six hundred positions, if not more. But uh, it it's been a lot, and that's to include that two fifty that we're showing on there.
Okay, who wants to go next?
Um, I'm sorry. I have two things, the health insurance contribution. I'd like to know if we increase it or decrease it from five, ten, thirty dollars, see what that would come out to. Possibly moving everybody to a base plan? What are we looking at? Talking about a T R S, with what that would look at.
Going to the T R, the state T R S.
Yes, just to see what, I know they're looking at savings of fifty million dollars, but just to see what we're looking at and get some information. But the other one too, I wanna know the enrollment. Work is that's that's the big kicker. I know we do an excellent job, but what what schools are decreasing enrollment? What have we been doing? And if we know, if we know uh, Scott Diaz is losing kids, students, we know how many? Do we know where they're going? And how many kids do we turn away? That's the big kicker. How many students do we turn away from every campus?
Good questions. Okay, and is there two things that you got out that is something that, hey, I like these two things as?
Well, I don't like it, but I understand the Vader. It's it's a six million dollars for every penny, I believe they're they're saying. So that's.
Okay.
That's definitely out there.
Good, alright. Remember, a part of this whole activity is to also educate the board about the budget, so that when when asked questions out there in the public. You can speak with one voice about the scenarios, right? Alright, great. Alright, anything else, Mr. Garrett? You're good. Alright. Who would like to go next? Alright.
No, because then I'd lose my words when you talk. What, one of the things that that I've learned through this process is actually, I I was horrified at the H B two. what, one of the things that that I've learned through this process is, actually, I I was horrified at the HB two, but I see the benefit, even though it's like a double-edged sword, it's the vouchers are the vouchers, but, um, the benefit to our ISD is is good, and it's 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 gonna help us. As much as it's gonna hurt us, it's gonna help us as well.
Right.
Um, the other thing is, um, what I, what I need more clarity about is, I'm I'm kinda with with Paul about the Vader. Um, I came in here and I sat down saying absolutely no, 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 because I just, I think it's gonna be a very hard sell, but at the same time, I see how it's part of the difficult decision-making that we need to make for the long-term good of our district. It's it's not something that I think at this point is a luxury, I think it's something that is a necessity in order for us to stay afloat and be responsible, um, to the community that we serve. Um, even though it's the community that we need to convince, um, or educate in in why we need to do this. I think the the Vader is something that I need to be schooled more in it personally, because I wanna make sure that I am advocating and I am giving factual information. So me personally, I'd I'd like to to sit with Mr. Solis if possible and
Right.
and just have a one-on-one, so that I can get some clarity.
Excellent.
Um, and the other, um, I think, uh, when when we talk about position reductions, I know this sounds harsh, but I remember a while back in our packet, we received a kind of a, it was, um, a layout of everybody's positions, like this is the director of this, he's the superintendent, and what is that called?
Work chart.
A work chart, chart, that's my heart, sorry, there's a, I'm bilingual in me. Um, so the community, our teachers, are, they don't, they don't see it like that, because I've been asked, well, why do we need so many directors in this department? They don't understand it. We we get it, but I think it's something that, just for the sake of transparency, let them know, well, you know, in in finance, we have the director of this, of this, of this, and they're all responsible for very different things. But for, I think, our general population, they're like, okay, how many directors do you need
Yep.
in one department to run one department? And I know it's, that's very simplistic, that's not how it works, but perception is everything. We wanna make sure that they understand what everybody does, everybody's responsibility, so that we don't keep getting that, well, everybody appear needs to take a cut, and so they understand that we are being responsible in the decision-making that.
Absolutely, no, it's good.
This happens.
It's a great opportunity to explain, just as well, so it's great. Any other thoughts or?
No.
Okay.
Two things that I learned was, number one, I think we all have the commonality that we understand that we have to live within our means. We all looked at finding a way to be, um, in the black. We did not wanna be in the red, so I think that's a great commonality that we have. The second thing was that we put students first. I think in all of our discussions, how do we minimize the impact to our students' means, to our campuses, to our teachers? Uh, so that was, those were things that were very clear to me, kind of those guardrails.
Yep.
Uh, the the things that I ask, um, is on the TRE, just give us details.
Yep.
Uh, same thing with the health insurance, give us details, I think, um, and I agreed with, you know, whenever Mr. Getta mentioned, you know, just give us the details on this. It just helps us tell the story, and to under, to be able to tell the story, we have to understand. So details matter, and that way we can move forward. And the last task, I'm gonna put the third, is that HB two. I think, or I'm gonna say, I know that there's certain low-lying fruit that we're leaving on the table that could help us on the bottom line.
And those are great co- comments as well too, and I just, I do wanna recall and just make you jog your memories. Uh, last year, both you guys had three tables. And everybody was in a deficit position last year.
Yes.
At least this year, you guys are on a surplus position. So the shift of the mindset of y'all's thinking about y'all's fiscal policy budget is been switched. Now, certainly, you've been dealing with a lot of trials and tribulations here to get to this was your point. So perhaps that has a huge impact and influence on that. But once again, I think it's about really trying to figure out, with the staff's help, which pathway. What this has shown you today, hopefully, is there's multiple ways of getting there. None of it is easy. The question becomes collectively, as a board, as a team, what can we stand on as a path forward? And then stick with it, and that's the thing you got to be really thoughtful about, and that's gonna take some discussion and so forth. Any other last-minute thoughts to give the board, to the staff some any directions?
The one last thing that you you mentioned is the trials and tribulations is why we're here.
Yep.
For me, it's the clarity. Now I have the information to make an informed decision based on data. Um, not looking in the past, just, um, truly honoring and thanking those that are here. I have that clarity, data-driven, to make decisions.
Excellent.
So so it's not the trials and tribulations, it's the information we have.
That's why I got it trademarked. It's great. Okay, um, I'm gonna have Mr. Solis say a few words here, because I know he's gotta talk about a few things relative to the next meetings and so forth. So, Mr. Solis, you wanna mention that?
First of all, I just wanna just thank the board for giving us the opportunity to have you participate in this activity um and share not only what you've learned, but also things that, uh, as administration, we can provide better clarity on, so that way you can help future, not only budget presentations, but also workshops. Um, and with that said, I understand that, you know, board elections are around the corner, and that the makeup of this board will change. Obviously, there's certain individuals that aren't running, so I know it's gonna change. So at some point, I'd still like to have an opportunity to present this activity, uh, to to the new board, uh, when that happens. Uh, but that activity will look a little di- different, because we'll be able to provide these additional points in there. And by then, hopefully, we'll know what decisions, obviously, they they've already made a decision on on vouchers, the the governor signed that, I believe, earlier today. Um, now we're just pending to see what the school finance decision will be made. So you can see, um, between now and and, um, in June, there's there's still some decisions that still have to be made that could impact probably how we look at this in terms of, well, what would the changes in HB two look like, right? Um, as they as they reach the Senate floor. Um, so again, I just wanna thank you all, and then I look forward to the opportunity to bring, uh, additional clarity, um, in future presentations and workshops.
With that, I think we'll turn it over to, back to you, Mr. President, in terms of, uh, for you to close out on comments as well.
Okay. Any other discussion, Mr. Solis? Do you know, do you have a anything ma- in mind maybe for our next, uh, either workshop or budget presentation?
At this time, I I I don't, um, it'll be, uh, here, obviously, in May, we're we're probably looking at maybe a couple budget workshops in in May. I don't have those dates, uh, exactly, but we'll we'll go ahead and discuss those with you.
Okay.
You know, Mr. President, we do have that, I believe, the May ninth, the Monday, I think, I think there's a, uh, consensus that we're gonna have a team of eight training there.
It's the nineteenth, I believe.
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, yes, sir.
Um, so that could be the earliest.
Okay.
Or you could have another one earlier than that. Uh, for for some reason, the ninth comes in my mind. Something on the ninth, um, am I missing?
I know, Daniel has all the dates.
Hey, look.
May ninth.
May ninth, we have Boyd Finance Committee Special Board Honors.
The nineteenth for the team of eight training? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm all over the place. Okay, so it's the nineteenth. So, but if you wanna do it earlier than that, obviously, the election's around the corner, uh, there's a canvassing of the, uh, the new candidates. Um, the regular board meeting is on the twenty-first.
Yes.
Uh, May, so, uh, the question becomes from a timing perspective.
Right, okay.
So I think, I do think that that's a discussion needs to be had. Um, I think in all fairness, um, you don't want new board members just making a cold decision. I think it might be beneficial for them to go through this particular activity with y'all, to have a full complement of the three tables. I think that might be really good.
Is maybe something that in spite of the discussions that we've had about all the other meetings.
I know.
This is one of the things I don't think we considered, and I think it's very evident now that it's necessary. So we'll have to figure out a time where we can work that in.
And I think, uh, to just going back to that, uh, committee we wanna put together, uh, out of fairness, I think we'd wanna wait till the new board is installed. That way, uh, just like we do with the facilities advisory committee, each member selects certain, uh, persons to sit on the committee. I think we're gonna wait till then as well.
Okay. Any other discussion about the presentation? No? Okay. Well, with there being, uh, no further business before this board for this special session, uh, we are adjourned, the time is eight eighteen PM, and the date is Thursday, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.